Excuse me, before the meeting is underway, where do I find the icon that allows me to let the mayor know that I would like to add a comment? Is there a icon like that on the screen?
It's a little circle. It's a little, looks almost like a little queue through it. And Holly, if you click on it and then you can type in your message and then there's on the bottom, there'll be a dropdown. So you can either message everybody or you can select an individual.
It's on the bottom of your screen, right next to your microphone, Fred.
Oh, I see.
Tim, did I make you the presenter in the right account?
Okay, I see a blur. So I can pick Mr. Mayor and then send my message.
Yeah, try the other one, Holly.
Okay.
You have to use the screen.
Oh.
Hi, everyone.
Yep.
Is that right?
Yep, that's the one.
Okay, good.
You can either make me the organizer or you can go ahead and do the dropdown by caller number one and you can edit caller number one and make that Dennis. And I'm not sure who caller number two is.
Could be me, who knows?
I think it's me, Holly. I was on early.
Okay, well caller four is Tim Riley.
Yep. And I'm not sure who caller two is.
Yeah, I don't, caller one, I think Dennis's name is already on there.
All right, oh, you can figure that out if they speak.
Okay, sounds good.
Do we have a forum?
It looks like it.
Okay. And just let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready when you are.
Okay. All right, we'll begin the meeting then. It's Tuesday, May 12th, 2020. City Council Meeting, the first order of business would be the roll call, Holly.
Borisma.
Here.
Caravelo. Phil Caravelo. Doom.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Legaki.
Here.
Mieski. Alder Mieski. Reeves.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
There are 10 elders present and Caravelo and Mieski, I assume will be joining us soon.
I'm here, Holly.
Oh, okay. There are 11 elders present then.
All right, thank you, Holly. And just a bit of an intro, it is set into my week, even though we won't be able to celebrate it because of the COVID-19. I'm dressed in my boonod to show honor to our festivities and hopefully next year we'll be able to partake in them. So setting the bio will be missed this year, but I'm sure a lot of people will be celebrating it in their own way. So just wanted to acknowledge that tonight. And we do have one presentation tonight. We have Dane County Executive Preise is here tonight to speak and the floor is yours, Joe. All right, is he still on? I saw him on earlier.
He's on, I can see him.
He's on, but his headphones are off now.
Okay.
He's making a call.
Okay, we'll give him a minute and see if he can join us.
Somebody send him a chat.
And do any council members have any communications while we're waiting for Executive Preise?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey.
I don't know if he knows he's up.
I sent him a text. We're ready for you, Joe, if you can hear me.
Oh, okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear anything until I just called. I apologize. So I'm up?
Yep, we're ready.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate you taking the time. I apologize for the technical difficulty. So thank you for letting me take a few minutes to come and chat with you tonight. I thought it would be helpful to come and check in and see how folks are doing. I can give you a, I'll try to make it a brief overview because I know you're aware of a lot of this, of some of the county efforts around COVID-19. And then I'm happy to answer any questions or speak to any subjects that you need to know more about. Either if I know off the top of my head, I'm happy to address it, or if not, I can get back to you. Does that, how much time would you like me to keep this to, Mr. Mayor?
Take as much time as you'd like.
Okay, great. Well, I will try to be concise. Again, thank you so much. So we're a couple of months into this now, as everyone knows. And first of all, I just want to recognize everyone for all the incredible work that folks have been doing. Certainly municipal governments and first responders and our local healthcare providers have been and continue to be at the forefront of addressing this pandemic. As folks on this call know, the county's role is kind of multifaceted. First and foremost, when an emergency occurs like this, we activate our Emergency Operations Center. And that's kind of the county's central focus, our central place to coordinate with healthcare, first responders and communities. And I think a number of you have probably been on our weekly calls that we still have with the Emergency Operations Center to share information and get resources and connect people with those resources. Like others, we've transitioned internally to doing very much of what we do remotely. We still have people who work in the nursing home and the jail and in certain human services like Child Protective Services, et cetera, who are still out there on the front lines, having to interact with folks. And we're doing everything we can to help make sure that those folks are safe. But we certainly have the utmost respect and appreciation for everything that those folks are doing. I wanted to fill you in on a couple of kind of central things that we're doing. As you know, the Align Energy Center, certainly like many businesses due to the pandemic, has virtually shut down as far as business. There are no concerts, there are no meetings, anything like that. So we've been doing our best to utilize the Align Energy Center in ways that are helpful to the community. Early on, we partnered with Second Harvest Food Bank and they're using the Align Energy Center as a packing and distribution center, not distribution to people directly, but to the food banks throughout partnership with Second Harvest and our local farmers and growers, through which the county is providing $3 million over the next 90 days to Second Harvest. As you know, the pandemic has hit people really hard from an economic standpoint as well as a health standpoint. And we've had countywide 30,000 people file for unemployment since the pandemic. So we have on one hand is an increased need for food. There have always been folks who need help and now there are even more folks who need help. And at the same time, our farmer's supply chain has been disrupted, not only for some of the processing, but certainly a lot of their customers, customers that were restaurants, et cetera. And so on one hand, we have a lot of folks who need help with food. The other hand, we have farmers and growers who have food and need a way to get it to market. So we facilitated a partnership through Second Harvest with that $3 million to get more food in the pipeline and connect local growers and farmers with Second Harvest so that they can purchase as much as possible from our farmers, all meat, dairy and produce. And what we've had to do is work in partnership with a lot of the processors, because obviously you can't always buy directly from the farmers. So we're having Second Harvest buy from those processors who buy from our farmers so that we're getting Dane County products. In addition, we leased four refrigerated semi-trailers that are at the Align Energy Center and those are available to store food, locally grown and processed food, to help facilitate that partnership. Some other things that we're doing at the Align Energy Center, the Saturday Farmer's Market that is usually on the square is happening at the Align Energy Center. Now it's the drive-through market where people can order their food directly from the farmers and drive and get it put in their trunk. Again, a way trying to help our farmers survive and keeping those pipelines open for local people to ensure that we have a solid food chain in Dane County. Couple of other things going on at the Align Energy Center. As you know, early on, it was identified as a potential site for an alternate care center slash field hospital should we need it for surge capacity during the pandemic. Folks have done an amazing job under the safer at home orders of adhering to the guidelines. So so far, working in partnership with the hospitals, who have also done a great job of reducing the number of folks in the hospitals and maintaining capacity. So we have not needed to stand that up. But we have worked with the National Guard and the Army Corps of Engineers to do the engineering and all the background work we need to do in case we do reach a point where we have a spike and we need an alternate facility, that the Army Corps can come in and stand that up on very short notice. And then, as you probably saw in the news today or yesterday, in partnership with the Army National Guard, we are doing a mass COVID-19 testing site at the Align Energy Center. And so we're, want to get the word out to everyone that anyone who would like to can go get tested, whether you're symptomatic or not, or just want to find out if you have COVID. You can go, it's drive up, you don't need an appointment, it's free and it's open Monday through Saturday from 8 until 4. And so anyone who wants to go there, please feel free. You don't even have to get out of your car. They'll test you right in your car. And in three to five days, you will know how things are going there. So a lot going on at the Align Energy Center. It's become kind of a hub because it is such a versatile space that we have. I wanted to mention just another, couple of other quick things that we've done. And I noticed where the supervisor, Tana Witt, is with us tonight, that, you know, working in partnership with the board, I want to thank the county board for their partnership in all these initiatives as well. In addition to the Second Harvest Initiative, they recently passed an initiative to provide an additional $10 million to our local small business relief fund. We're partnering with an organization called Dane by Local, which is a group that represents all of our local small businesses. And with that $10 million, we will have a total of $10.8 million in that fund to be distributed to local businesses. You know, there are some federal programs or some other, there's some other programs out there, but you know, no one entity can fulfill that entire gap. And our goal is to throw a lifeline to these businesses, who the businesses and their employees are certainly hurting to a great degree. And while we can't make them whole, it's our hope that we can help them survive and get through this so that when we can start loosening up and letting, and having these businesses get back into business, that they'll exist, that they'll survive. I mean, this is survival, both on the public health standpoint and the economic standpoint. And so myself and the county board are committed to helping folks get through this in any way we can. It's challenging because, you know, county government is experiencing the same challenges that city and village governments are facing and that a lot of small businesses are facing and that our revenues have dropped very, very steeply, very quickly. For example, $68 million of our annual operating budget comes from sales tax. And we estimate that probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $25 million of that will disappear just this year. So we are looking at things internally, like we have a hiring freeze that's been in place for a couple of months. We've embarked on a voluntary furlough program and I issued budget guidelines to, excuse me, to our department heads today, asking smaller departments to come back with a scenario for 2.5% cuts for 2021 and the larger departments to come back with 5% cuts. So we're all going to have to tighten our belts while at the same time, just like municipal government, realizing that we are the safety net for our communities and that we have to, we have to be able to operate under challenging circumstances. Another initiative that we announced earlier this week, again, when we look at vital services that are necessary, especially as we try to get to a place where the public health guidelines will allow us to start opening up again in the economy. They've identified, and we've all identified, it's well known that childcare is crucial to being able to open up the economy. So we announced earlier this week a $3.5 million grant program to provide relief to the approximately 500 licensed childcare providers throughout Dane County. This grant will be from $1,400 for the smallest, up to $15,000 for the largest centers. And every single provider who is licensed will receive one of these grants. And we worked with PC, Community Coordinated Childcare, to look at the right size for those grants, for what people need. Again, just like the small business grants, to help them survive so that that service is available. Nationally, there are surveys that have estimated up to 50% of childcare centers could fold due to the pandemic. And we just can't let that happen here in Dane County. And we're committed to doing everything we can to help them survive that. I think I'll just mention one more of our initiatives that we've worked on over the last few weeks. And there's been a lot because we've had to get a lot out the door really quickly, because you have to be able to turn on a dime to respond to a challenge like this. And no one has worked harder or more diligently than our public health department. Those folks, as many of us are, have been working seven days a week and doing just an amazingly heavy lift and great work. So despite all of the work they're doing, there's more to do. And so what we've needed to do is we've allocated $700,000 to the health department so that they can add eight staff people who will be directly responsible for additional COVID response. And some of the things they will be doing, you've probably heard the word tracers by now, as we ramp up testing and identify. And once we can get the numbers down as they have been and keep them down, when we identify someone who's positive, we need people who can go out and interview those folks and then try to reach out to every single person they may have come in contact with just to let that person know they may have been exposed. We also have some funding in there to help people who may need to quarantine, but may not have the resources, might need help with a food delivery or a place to stay. We want to make sure that if someone needs to quarantine, that they're able to, both for their safety and the safety of others. That's an overview. You know, obviously, there's a lot going on, a lot more we could talk about. I don't want to take up your whole evening. But I wanted to give you kind of up to this point and we're working on with the county board, a number of other initiatives to move forward to address the needs that exist in the community. And I'd be happy to, again, answer any questions. If there's anything you want to put on my radar screen that's going on in the community, I'm happy to listen and happy to have as long of a conversation as you'd like. Thank you.
All right, I'll jump in. Executive Preise, this is Alder Schumacher. I have a question on the test, the field testing area that you've got set up. And those are done in, I'm assuming, in the nasal swab, the PCR testing, is that right?
Correct.
Do you know what time length you anticipate to have that open and are there capacity limits to that per day?
Yeah, we're working with the guard and our estimate is that we could do about 800 people a day. It'll be up for at least a few weeks. Hopefully, it'll be up as long as there's demand. After a certain point, the guard makes that decision. But we hope to be able to have it out as long as, as long as there's a need, both for people who want to come because they want to be tested. And it also helps give a little bit of a break to our healthcare providers too, if we can do some of the testing there. And yes, it is the nasal swabs. It tickles a little bit, doesn't hurt.
So Mr. Preise?
Can I do one more follow-up before you jump in, Sid?
Yep.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right. And then, so if you wind that down within three or four weeks for doing the PCR testing, is there any possibility or any plan or thoughts on following that up with the serological testing when you have the tracers that are out there as well?
Yeah, and I think, I think a lot of that has to do with availability and resources. So I think the more, because all of that testing is going to be important as far as, you know, data points. There's nothing, there's nothing solid right now as far as the testing to see if someone has had it, but we're looking at all those options. And again, just for the basic testing, you know, right now, the commitment from the guard is for a few weeks. I'm hoping that will be even longer.
Okay, I look at that. Thank you. I look at that. I'm on the mega end of it. So I am the recipient of a lot of these testings. So just trying to gauge what my workload's going to be ahead of time anyway.
Yeah, hopefully it's going to be heavy. Yeah, thank you for what you're doing. I appreciate it.
So Joe, this is Sid Borisma. I'm a long-term social worker for Dane County, have now retired. I was, I worked for a number of years at the county, at Badger Prairie. I just wonder how they're doing, because I really have not heard. And then I have a second question, is how are our foster parents doing and our foster kids?
Yeah, yeah. So Badger Prairie, it won't surprise you, they've been rock stars. You know, Dane County, as you probably know, was the first county in Wisconsin and the 12th location in the nation to have a positive COVID-19 case identified. And the kind of silver lining to that was that we kicked into gear early. Dane County, even before the state of Wisconsin, put in place guidelines limiting gatherings, first to 250 and then to 50. And internally, we kicked into gear very quickly. One of the first things we did was we closed down Badger Prairie to visitors. And as you know, it's very, it's very tough in a nursing home on our residents, when you can't have visitors. And we realize what a hardship it is. At the same time, it's obviously an extremely vulnerable population. And both the workers and the residents have been amazing. We have not had any problems with COVID at the nursing home. And so we continue to be very strict there and monitor and there are still not visitors at that location. As far as our work with foster parents and, you know, vulnerable children, it's extremely challenging, as you can guess. I was on a call like this this morning with a group of our Child Protective Service intake workers, just to check in with them, see how things are going, see, you know, how their lives have changed. And, you know, it's just as with so many other interactions we have, they do as much as they can over video. But, you know, a lot of our folks still have to go do face-to-face contact, especially with vulnerable families. So those are some of the unsung heroes out there who we don't always, always see. But those are some of the county staff who are out there doing some incredible work. And I couldn't have been more impressed than I was with the people I was on the line with today.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Executive Preise?
Yeah, I've got one. Ben Healy here. We were discussing in a committee last week, looking forward to the August primary and the November election, whether we can try to ensure as many people as possible get the, get the absentee ballots as, and spread it out over several months. We were wondering if there was a, already going, an effort on the county level to perhaps send out ballot applications or something of that sort.
I haven't checked in with the clerk about that specifically. I would certainly be in support of that. I think it's, I think it's the right way to go. I'm very concerned about what happens in the fall with elections and other things. As we know, the fall is when we could potentially see another spike in cases, especially if we begin relaxing some of the guidelines and then deal with the seasonal issues that we do in the fall. So if you'd like, Ben, I could, I could have, I have, one of my staff people, Scott, is on the line with me right now. And I could ask him to follow up with you and get you some answers to the questions and share any concerns you have also with the county clerk. We'd be happy to work with you on that.
That would be excellent. Thank you.
Okay, we'll do that. Thanks. And Scott, I don't know if you can see, Scott, are you on the phone or are you on the call? Can you see that that was Ben? Of course, I can't hear you.
I don't know if he can hear me, but I got it.
Okay, he told me he got it.
Excellent. All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you so much for all the work you've been doing. And we certainly appreciate the update and the weekly calls that we've been attending.
Right, likewise. Thank you. I appreciate everything you all are doing, Joe. Have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. Bye-bye.
All right. We're gonna jump ahead on the agenda now. We're gonna go to item 12. Dave Ferris is here to talk about our borrowing and he has some other meetings tonight. And Jamie, can I make you the presenter for this?
Sure.
All right. You're driving it. And Dave, whenever you're ready, you can go. We're on item number 12. And this is coming from the Finance Committee, Alder Person, Schumacher.
So this is Resolution R 79 2020, the resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of, not to exceed 2.44 million. General obligation promissory note, Series 2020A, and I so moved that.
Second.
The second by Alder Person Reeves. Anything else you want to add, Alder Person Schumacher?
So this is some of the borrowing in that, that's coming in from CIP. And it's going to be, it'll be just slightly different, but I'll let Dave talk about that and then some other details from Jamie as well.
All right, the floor is yours, David.
Okay, thank you. So the issue that we're going to propose to take to the market is 2,440,000 in your packet. And I don't know how you're going to keep up with me, Jamie, because I'll probably bounce around a little bit. But on page six of the packet is the projects that are, or page six of my report, I don't know what that is for you. I'll let you catch up. So that list in the packet is what makes up the projects and the equipment that is included, the borrowing at this point. The amount of the borrowing is basically the project cost plus issuance expenses, which many of those are estimates at that time and they will be solidified on sale day. What Alderman Schumacher brought up is there's a slight difference in how we are selling the bonds. Mostly everything is the same as far as how the bonds are sold. And I had Jamie send out an informational sheet on this. But what happens in the month of June is that a lot of municipalities all over the country sell a lot of debt issues. And Mondays and Tuesdays are pretty crazy, especially in June. When we looked at our own calendar, you know, if we sold on city council days, we'd be up against some fairly large borrowings even in our office. So one way that we kind of presented to staff is, you know, would there be an interest in maybe moving this to a day that you could potentially get more bidders, more interest in your issue? And, you know, as you probably have heard me say, you know, with the issue we did last fall was, the more competition you have, the better rates you can get. So we recommended that you consider having the city do what's called a parameters resolution. And on the bottom of, Jamie's got it on the screen, are the parameters that are in the issue. And on the bottom of, uh, Jamie's got it on the screen, um, are the parameters that are in the issue. Uh, basically the underwriters need to meet these conditions for their bids to be considered. Um, they typically, uh, have to abide by these as well. You don't usually see all these, these, uh, items when we do the sale. But these are, you know, like the, the max bid, mid bid or pre right, you know, they're the same amount they would have been if we'd done a normal sale. But since we're doing this on a non-city council, they are proposing to do this on a non-city council day. What we're asking you to do in the resolution that's before you is to allow the mayor or the finance, director of finance to, um, sign off on what the recommended low bid is in this case. So typically we would do the sale on one day, uh, we would prepare the sale day report and then we bring it to that night to approve. In this case, we would do pretty much all the same, except that once we have the recommendation, if, if they meet these parameters, that we would, uh, ask you to give the mayor or the director of finance the authorization to sign off on that sale as long as it meets all those parameters. And then what we'll do is we'll still prepare the sale day report. And as I said in the, uh, uh, the, the handout that Jamie sent out, uh, uh, this morning is that if you'd like us to present that at a meeting, we're happy to do it. Um, but it, you know, it's just a, a way to give you more flexibility. It's still really, you know, exactly the same process, except for how it gets approved at the end. And you would be the ones that would authorize them to approve. Jamie, is there anything else that you want me to cover in this or is there comments you want to make?
Um, I don't think there's anything else you need to cover. Again, this is, this is for the CIP that we passed last year for the year 2020. Um, it's actually below what we're anticipating at, in terms of borrowing at the time we did pass the budget. Cause as, as the borrowing gets closer, we start looking at the alternative sources of revenue in terms of, uh, any excess revenues in the construction funds, special assessments, interest earnings, things like that. So this is actually lower than the amount that we originally budgeted for as well. Um, again, as Dave noted, the only difference here is that we're not coming to you the same day that we make the sale. Um, in my opinion, this is actually more information than you see and you have a little bit more time to digest it as well by seeing the parameters ahead of time before we make the sale. Um, so that, that, that's the only difference really this year compared to past years. Um, I think with that, if anybody has any questions, uh, Dave or I would be happy to answer them.
Absolutely.
Are there any questions?
Um, I say, I certainly like having this approach, um, again, because it gives us the time to actually look over rather than just being presented with it, uh, at the moment and then having to make a decision on it quickly. So, um, for this or even for, for future ideas, I, I think that this is certainly a, a more palatable way to go.
And as I said, it gets you a little, little more flexibility because, um, when the COVID virus hit us in early March, we actually did end up postponing some sales because the interest rates were kind of bouncing all over the place. Um, so, you know, we don't anticipate that to happen in this case because the, actually the market has settled down some. But, um, you know, it's, it's something that if we saw something on sale day that we didn't like, we could, we could postpone the sale and let the market settle down and then come back as well. But at this point, we don't see that that's an issue because the markets have seemed to, to come back to a little bit more stabilized, uh, variation.
Okay, so we, we have a motion on the table. So all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And anybody opposed? That motion carries. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Hopefully you're on topic.
Uh, they should still be going. Thank you though.
You bet. All right, we're gonna go back toward the beginning of the agenda. There's a couple of proclamations that were in the packet. And the first one was to recognize, uh, National Police Week 2020 and to honor and serve those that sacrifice in law enforcement and officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas more than 900,000 law officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Stoughton Police Department. And whereas there's been 61,999, 995 assaults against law enforcers in 2017, resulting in approximately 17,902 injuries. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 21,000 law of enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including one member of the Stoughton Police Department Patrolman Paul Craby. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls at the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. Whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of the fallen officers and their families and US flag should be flown to half staff. And therefore be it resolved that Mayor Tim Swadley formally designates May 10th through 16th, 2020 as Police Week in City of Stoughton and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement, law enforcement officers in the community and in the communities across the nation. So that's the first one. The second one is, uh, for Public Works. And whereas Public Works infrastructure facilities and services are of critical importance in the local economy, health, safety and overall well-being of our community. And whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of the Public Works staff who plan, construct, inspect, maintain and operate public infrastructure that are essential to serve our citizens. And whereas the health, safety and comfort of the citizens within the community greatly depends on the services provided by Public Works. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Public Works Department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas is the public interest for our citizens, civic leaders and children to learn and understand the importance of vital Public Works programs such as infrastructure, construction, maintenance, stormwater control, snow and ice removal and programs aimed for a better quality of life. And now therefore I, Tim Swadley, Mayor of City of Stoughton, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17th through 23rd, 2020 as National Public Works Week. And I would also mention that this is also a National Skilled Nurses Week as well. So May is a busy month where many organizations are honored. Uh, hopefully I didn't miss anybody. If I did, we certainly, uh, appreciate, uh, everybody that's out there working on behalf of the public. So thank you again. Uh, minutes and reports are in the packet. Um, next item is public comment. And I did not see anybody signed up for public comment. Um, did you Holly?
No, no one signed up before the meeting.
Okay. Is there anybody that would wish to speak at public comment that didn't sign up? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to the consent agenda. And it looks like there's a couple of items in the consent agenda and I would entertain a motion to approve it.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Motion by Johnson, a second by Schumacher. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Okay, um, next item is R 68 of 2020. And that's a resolution by the common council to approve the master development agreement from Petal Park West. And we can either review it or somebody can make a motion. What would you guys like to do?
Yeah, for the purpose of discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Is there a second?
One second.
And a second by, um, Alder Person Hunt. Um, what we can do is we can walk through this. Jamie, if you want to make me the presenter, I have the documents on my screen.
Mayor, did everybody know that you had sent an email with the revised one about a couple, an hour or so ago?
Yes, I did.
I've not had a chance to review that. I just saw it right before the meeting.
Same here.
Yes, I.
I don't know how to make you presenter.
I think I can.
Okay.
Um, just a second. Did I get the right one?
I think it's the other one. That one says off.
Oh, I can't. Is Tim still there?
Yeah, I'm back. My computer, uh, my computer logged out on me. I mean, it rebooted on me. So I'm on phone now and my computer will come back up shortly. So bear with me just a moment and I'll get this thing going again.
Uh, Mayor Swadley, this is, uh, Matt Dregney. Would it, if I provided at least a little context about this agreement, just to orient people to where, where we are?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah. All right. All right.
Okay, so I can, uh, share my screen now, Matt, so.
Okay.
We want to walk through this. So yeah, this document, Matt sent out updated version later this afternoon. I think there was only a couple of minor changes and I'm not sure if they were on the specific one or not. Um, so Matt, you can maybe highlight the changes since the last meeting while you're walking through this.
Yeah, uh, so the only thing that is different about the agreement that's in, that's before us tonight is relates to, uh, park fees and parkland dedication. Uh, otherwise this same, uh, agreement was in your packet at your last meeting and it was in the packet in the lead up to this meeting. The purpose of this master development agreement is, uh, the main purpose of the agreement is to, um, require the developer to build out the plan of the public improvements needed to serve this development in accordance with the city's, um, specifications and to lay out the process by which that will happen. Um, the, the issue that was unresolved, uh, at the last meeting and that we think we have now resolved in this agreement has to do with the park dedication. Um, there is, um, let's see, the, the plat that's been approved, the Meadows plat dedicates a little over six acres of land for park purposes, which does not quite meet the park dedication requirement for the development. So what this agreement does is provides for a mechanism for the developer to convey an additional approximately four acres of land that's outside the plat to the city to add to that park. And so that, uh, total land area, the 6.3 acres in the plat and the additional four acres would satisfy the park dedication requirements for the development as a whole. Um, and so this agreement now lays out a structure for doing that. It involves the, the land being first annexed to the city. Once it's annexed, um, the landowner would convey that land to the city. And the agreement, um, lays out a mechanism to manage that process. If there is any challenge to the annexation, the agreement addresses how that challenge will be, uh, handled. And if for some reason we're unsuccessful in getting this four acres to the park, um, the agreement requires the developer at the end of the day to pay fees in lieu of land dedication to the city. And that payment obligation is secured through the assignment of, uh, $550,000 municipal revenue obligation to the city. So we, um, we've believed that, uh, we've, uh, addressed the park issue now in a way that is satisfactory to both, uh, the city's, uh, standards and particular requirements and also is something the developer can, can, um, can do. So that's really the only difference between this agreement tonight and, um, the agreement that was before you at your last meeting. Be happy to answer any questions.
Matt, this looks good. What is, um, so that their attorney is on, um, online. Is there any objections to this? Have they reached out to the landowner? How likely is this going to actually happen?
Yeah, I'm happy to, to respond, uh, Council President Hirsch and Mayor Swadley, if that's appropriate.
Please do.
Um, hi, Dan O'Callahan, uh, representing for a developed group. Um, first off, I'd like to say thank you to the city staff. This was the one open item, um, in this agreement. I was before your last, at your last meeting, but we hadn't quite figured out how to accomplish this dedication of the four acres of parkland in the town. Um, I'd like to thank, uh, Attorney Dregney in particular for, for being very creative and solving the, the legal challenges here. We've got a very good solution, um, for being able to dedicate this four acres to the city. Um, and, uh, yes, Council President Hirsch, um, part of our agreement with the landowner is to, um, is to purchase this land and then dedicate it to the city as part of the, the overall, um, initial kickoff of this project. So we're acquiring the land that will be platted. Six acres of, of land within the plat itself will be dedicated. This particular four acres, um, is just outside, um, the plat itself, just adjacent to the six acre parcel. Um, so that's all part of the same arrangement, um, for us to acquire that land and to be able to dedicate it, uh, to the city. Um, it's just that with this particular four acres, you have to jump through a few extra hoops to first get it annexed to the city before we can give it to the city as parkland. Um, and I think we've now got a very, um, good process in place, one that protects the city's interests. Um, and one that'll work for the developers. So we're very supportive of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, the only other thing on the master agreement, is there a, uh, exhibit A that's part of this? The listed parcel?
Is there a what?
An exhibit A. There's just a blank page. And then.
One moment, let me look at the exhibit list. Well, yeah, the reason that exhibit is not there yet is we won't be able to generate the list of parcel ID numbers until the plat is recorded. And so my intent is that that exhibit would be added. We'll sign the agreement. The agreement will be completed and signed. We won't add that exhibit until the plat is recorded because we, we won't have parcel ID numbers available until that time.
Yeah, my only concern is with under, um, you know, with again, the access to 138, you know, opening drive going down to 138. It says about lot one and that there's nowhere in this document that, I know it was in the plat, but it's not in this document to actually know what that really is. I'm assuming it's the same, but I never really want to assume anything.
Um, we're talking about lot one of the CSM, I believe. Is that? The, the.
Yeah, I'm just making sure that we, everything is like.
Yeah, I think that is, yeah, I believe that is addressed. If you give me a moment, I think I could find that.
Because that's not an attachment to this and so maybe it needs to be.
Um, I, I'm, I'm confident it's been addressed. I just have to find it.
It's on page 13, Matt. Okay, paragraph E, the restriction on developing.
Right, but there's no diagram that goes with that. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, let me take a quick peek. Well, the, so the agreement does prevent, say that the developer is not allowed to sell, convey or develop the lands within lot one of CSM until that condition has been satisfied. Um, I think that's adequate. Um, I know we're also deed restricting lots. I just want to take a look at what we did there. Exhibit D restrict lots in future phases. Just taking a peek at that. So, uh, Alder Person Hirsch, I believe that what we will do is in exhibit D, in the restricted, in the restrictive covenants relating to lots in future phases. Um, I can make sure that we, we've got a form of that document as exhibit D and I can make sure that we include, lot one of the CSM as one of the lots that would be restricted by those covenants.
Okay.
I think that, yeah.
Matt, I think you're having yourself. I think you've got it in there already.
Do I?
Yes.
Oh, it, it is in there already. Okay.
Where is it?
I can't remember every little detail, but you're right. I see it. It's there already.
Good work.
Where is it? You point that out?
Yeah, if you look at exhibit D under the, it, you tell me when you're there and then I'll show you where to look. Oh, there it is. It's up on the screen. So right under the recitals, it says lots blank through blank of the plat of the Meadows, et cetera, et cetera. And then it says, and lot one of CSM number blank. So that CSM number, we can't fill that in yet because the CSM has not been recorded. But once it, once it is recorded and we have a CSM number for that, we will finish this document and record the document.
Okay.
Same error. Sid Borzma.
Borisma, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, say, I have a question of Dan and, and maybe, I don't know if Rodney's on or not. Uh, but, uh, it's the question. Yeah, the question is that additional parkland at four acres, um, is that it a good spot to, to have four acres of land? Um, uh, yeah, I think Dan addressed it a little bit by saying that it's adjacent to the whole development area, but um, just, I just want to check to make sure that that's a, it's, it's in a good spot for a parkland development.
Holly, if you could share my screen, Holly, I can put it up to show people where it is on the map.
Yeah, and Sid, it's an extension of the other six. So it's an actual nice, big 10 acre plot of land for a park as opposed to two separate parts. So it's actually really nice.
Yeah, I just haven't seen it yet. So.
No, 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 German question.
On the screen now, it essentially shows this area off to the left side of the plat area. The four acres is, uh, generally in this area is shown. And more specifically, more specifically, this is the four acre parcel that's, that's being described.
Okay, so it's directly as attached to the other, uh, parkland parcel.
That's correct.
It looks, it looks very good. Thank you.
Matt, I've got one general question, if I could. Um, are, are master development agreements designed to be a standalone document? Or, uh, are these, um, like, I know, and we delayed move, making any action on these documents because they were sort of nested in sequence. But does that also mean that these documents, uh, refer to other documents that they, like, this one just couldn't be a standalone that no one could forget about details like Alder, or President Hirsch is talking about?
Well, so the master development agreement works in tandem with the next agreement that we'll be, uh, talking about tonight, um, which is called the subdivision improvements agreement. So the master development agreement is, I would think of it as an umbrella agreement that applies to all phases of development that will happen within this development. And this development will build out in phases over time. And the master agreement, uh, provides, as I say, the, the, as an umbrella agreement, all of the details that are, that the developer is required to, to adhere to as they're building this development out. As each phase moves forward, there is then a, a much shorter agreement called the subdivision improvements agreement that it delineates the precise scope of that phase. And it addresses the need for security to secure the construction of public improvements for that phase. Uh, there will be, um, uh, there will be, um, uh, security provided to secure performance with each phase. And then there will be a release of the lots with that phase so that they can be sold. Now, just so you know that, you know, of these agreements, you'll be acting on them separately. It's, it's set up that way, but the I, that's, this, this master development agreement works kind of hand in hand then with that shorter, uh, uh, agreement that will go with each development phase. I'm not sure if I'm really capturing your question though. Does that get to your question?
It does. Thank you. Um, uh, what, what I meant by it was that none of these documents could be orphaned at all from the other ones ultimately.
Well.
They are connected, right?
They, they really are. Um, in, in a, theoretically, the TIF agreement, um, is, is kind of a, it deals with the financial aspects more than anything else. So if there was no need for TIF funding, uh, the master development agreement and the subdivision improvement agreement, those two alone could do the job of at least dealing with all of the development issues that need to be managed as this builds out. Um, the TIF agreement is, is part of the mix here because there is a need for, uh, funding to pay for a lot of this work.
All right, I got it. Um, I just, I, I guess, kind of going off of what President Hirsch was saying was uh, ideas about, um, like, we don't want to forget details that we've had throughout the whole process. By, if they're not officially like referenced in a specific area.
So, once these agreements are approved, we'll move into a process of executing the agreements and getting everything recorded and moving into the next phase where developer actually proceed with, with development. But, um, the next, after these are approved, it will be necessary to be carefully working through the process of, I, maybe I think of it as like a closing on this where everything will need to be signed. We'll have to fill in the blanks that are still blank once the plat and the CSM are recorded, record the remaining documents and, and so we'll be, we'll be careful as we work through that next stage of the process to make sure we don't miss anything.
Okay. All right, I think I beat that enough. Thank you.
Any other questions on the master developers agreement?
No, does Rodney have the CSM that everybody can just see when, what I was talking about and what's going to be actually included into this document? Does he have that available or is Rodney, is that not on your upper screen?
Rodney, you're muted.
I'll have it momentarily for you here. And while Rodney's looking for that, I'll just echo what, what Matt just said. We're hopeful that the council will authorize, um, and approve the form of these three documents, these three agreements tonight. Um, it will be sometime before we're in a position to actually sign these agreements with the city. Um, it's a process, but perhaps 30 days or more. Um, we still have to go to the joint review board next Wednesday for their approval. Um, and then it's, um, there's some, some additional time to prepare the final form of the documents and get to the, the closing where these will actually be signed. So they'll all be done together. Um, from our standpoint, they all very much go together. We need all of these things to come together. Um, so we'll be watching, um, and working with Matt to ensure that all of the, the details fall into place.
The CSM that's being discussed is actually on the screen at this point.
That just looks like the kettle. That's not the actual.
I can, here, allow me to expand a little bit. If I can provide you just a little bit of an overview. Um, recall, there's actually two platted areas in the lots to the north part. The CSM is this area to the southern part. So those three developments, the, the CSM, the, the two different plats combined to create this phase of the Kettle Park West development. And they're all covered under this, uh, development agreement, the master.
Right. When they say on the CSM lot one, I guess that's what I'm making sure that we know what lot one is.
Lot one is defined on this, on this CSM. Here's lot one. It's the western part of the CSM. This is the dedicated area that for Oak Opening Drive to connect to, so you have a 138. Lot one is not the full kettle. It's the area that creates a buildable parcel or the area that could be built. Out lot one is the kettle basin area, the, the stormwater management area.
Right. But then I think lot one is not the, the complete area that we had agreed upon when we did this about, um, for the 138 extension.
Right. And if we go, Rodney, can we put up page, uh, 13 of the master development agreement?
Yeah, I think it'll help if I also just show this exhibit. So, uh, Alder Hirsch, I think you're referring to the fact that these lots south of Alpine Run cannot be developed.
Right, which is not what's stated in this thing. On section E, the connection to Highway 138.
Right. So this, that requires to look. So if you look at section D and E, you have to look at both sections to capture this. Sections D prohibit, or prevents the, or says that the city will not issue building permits for lots. Well, let me, let me, I'm sorry, go ahead. Second part of section D, lots in block three and lots nine to 30 in block two shall not be sold or conveyed to a bona fide third party purchaser until Oak Opening Drive is constructed in. That's basically covered in section D on page 13.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
It's just because we didn't have it actually part of the packet, the CSM to refer back to. I just want to double check everything.
Yep.
Are there any other questions about, uh, master developer agreement? So we want to make sure that everyone understands that the agreement that is in the packet is slightly different than the one that we sent out in the email today. So really what we're voting on was the one that was updated to reflect the changes for the parkland.
Okay.
Um, hearing no other questions, all in favor of the master developers agreement, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? Any abstentions? So that carries. So then the next item is R69, which is the subdivision improvement. Do you want to start off by making a motion again, or would you like to an overview?
Kim, I, I would, uh, I would make a motion to approve for the purposes of discussion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Fred, okay. And then, uh, you want to walk us through this one, Matt? How about you can make me the presenter again on my desktop if you could. Uh, that would be, that's, no, the other one.
They keep changing.
Yeah.
The order, okay.
Oh, there it is. Awesome, thank you. All right. So Matt, you want to walk us through this one?
Sure, uh, if you could scroll down to the first page of the agreement. Okay. So as I said earlier, this is a short, basically two-page agreement that is, uh, going to be used to define the scope of each development phase and to allow the developer to move forward with that phase. And to require that we obtain security to cover the, uh, work that's included in each phase. And so it, in paragraph one, if you scroll down, uh, there you go. Keep scrolling down. So you can see in paragraph one, this refers to the master development agreement and makes it clear that the developer is bound by that agreement. Um, and that the master agreement governs the development of this phase. So most of the details provided in, in the master agreement. Um, this document, uh, the scope of, you know, phase A is defined in the recitals and there's an attachment uh, that shows the scope of phase A. Um, if you keep scrolling down, paragraph three, you'll see that, um, there's a need for approval of a starting date before the developer can move forward and a need for security to be provided. Um, the time of completion is addressed in paragraph five. Surety is again touched on in paragraph six. And, and that's really what all this agreement does. It defines the scope of the phase, allows the developer to move forward with that phase after providing um, surety and it, uh, provides the deadline for completion of the work in that phase.
Okay, are there any questions about this one?
I, I do have a question very quickly, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm wondering if all, if all the, all the land, all the contracts have been implemented or are the process of being implemented by Ford Development for the purchase of the land that's going to encompass this whole project, uh, just a, a quick update maybe from Ford Development.
Sure, Alder Borzma, all of that right now is still pending. And all of, um, our plans to move forward with that, our contingent on council approval of all of these agreements and our, our ability to move forward with the development. Um, so we're hopeful that the council will authorize these. We're hopeful that the joint review board will approve the TIF. Um, or I should say that the project plan amendment at its meeting next week. And once all those contingencies are satisfied, then we'll be able to move forward with the acquisition phase of the development here. Um, and all of these agreements are drafted in a way that, um, that require us to have control of the land before we can begin the development.
And Dan, if I could ask one follow-up question, and that would be, are there any kinks in the system? I mean, are there any, is there any possibility that, that, you know, partial parcels are not going to be able to be purchased as, as you're hoping? Or I, I'm just wondering whether or not there's any possibility that this cannot go forward because you're not going to be able to access the land.
Well, it's, um, it's certainly taken us a little longer than we anticipated to get to this point. Um, but, uh, we're, we're very optimistic. We're feeling very good about the progress that has been made to date. Um, with these sorts of developments, it's never a, a certainty. Um, and it's never done until it's done. Um, but things are looking very good to Alder Borzma and, um, we are, um, we're confident that we will be able to move forward if the council gives its approval tonight and the joint review board, um, gives its approval next week.
I, I raise a question because there's, there seems to be, to be a lot of people involved in this whole process, not just the council, not just Ford Development, but a number of landowners. but a number of landowners that need to have their land, you know, be purchased. So it's a it's a very, very complicated procedure and I just want to be real careful to commend both Matt and and others and Rodney and everybody else working on this thing and the mayor. Because this is, this is really a tremendous undertaking. And I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions about the subdivision improvement? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Okay, and then the next item is the R seventy-one of twenty twenty. This would be the TIF agreement. Does somebody want to start off with a motion on this? Or would you like us to go through it first?
I'll I'll present a motion to approve the TIF plan as presented tonight at council.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, now Matt, did this one have a change in it?
Yes, yes. He said about the new one.
Right, so we're we're going to be the one that's in the email, which I'll put on the screen. And otherwise, there's just the one change which Alder Person Hirsch or President Hirsch spent a great amount of time helping us get this done. So I want to acknowledge that right off the bat. Thank you for your work. Matt, you want to walk us through this?
You're muted, Matt.
I'm sorry, I was muted. This agreement is, for the most part, the same agreement that you had in your pocket at your last meeting. The new material relates to wetland restoration work. And if you scroll down to page four, that's where we can start with a description of that item. Yeah, okay, so section E there. And I did notice that I have a typo in there, which I can correct before we sign this, but a very minor typo. This paragraph requires the developer or says that the developer is authorizing the city and its employees and agents to undertake wetland restoration work on outlet one of the CSM. That's basically the large outlet that has the kettle in it and the wetland area in it. It goes on to say that the wetland restoration work may include, and I won't list everything. But it's it's a range of work that Alder Hirsch really gets the credit for putting the parameters around by the work she did with people in this area. And Alder Hirsch, do you want to provide some information about the the scope of the work?
Sure, first off, there is a typo. It shouldn't be installation of wildlife deterrents. It should be enhancements. We want to, and you know.
Actually, that's not, no, that's not what the, this this that refers to keeping wildlife from damaging the new plantings. We took that out of the Stantec.
Okay, so I was like, wait a minute.
But there's some enhancements as well, but my typo was where I said mowing on cutting and it should have said mowing or cutting.
All right, yeah, the wildlife deterrents has to do with keeping wildlife out once you replant the site. So what I did is I contacted Fish and Wildlife, DNR, Ducks Unlimited, Wisconsin Wetlands Association to try to figure out the best approach. And they put me in touch with Stantec, which is a consulting firm that actually has years and years of experience looking at wetlands that were kind of abused when it was a farmland and restoring those wetlands into functioning wetlands and wildlife sanctuaries and conservation areas. And so one of the consultants at Stantec actually walked around the site and saw what was there and gave us a proposal. I mean, he turned around this proposal within a week, so that was was great. And you have the proposal in front of him. And instead of, you know, the installation wildlife determines and prescribed burning, the other things that they had suggested besides those, that first five years to get the bad invasive species like reed canary grass and broadleaf cattail. And I think there was a couple other invasive species in there out. It takes a lot of intensive management for the first, you know, one to five years, depending on how well it works. And then we established during that time, we also reestablished the planteds. And based on what is happening at that wetland, about fluctuation in water and and I think there isn't supposed to be that big of a bounce. They'll select the right plants that will grow with those kind of versatile water scenarios, which there are plenty to choose from. So with that, that will happen within, you know, one to five or at least five years. And then you have to go into a maintenance phase that just is like spot checking every year or two and doing, you know, spot treatment if something comes up. And so they also said that there's, you know, they're willing to work with us and look for other sources of funding, so it doesn't necessarily have to come out of all out of the TIF. So they're really excited about working on this. And I think this, hopefully, this is what you guys had wanted to see in there. And if not, let me know and we can change it around.
I think it looks great.
This is this is Greg, and I compliment you, Regina, and that is just excellent work. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, it was fun.
And kudos to everybody for turning it around so quickly.
And I share that too, Regina. That was a lot of work. I did have one one concern about that, and I remember that when this this kettle was watering hole for cattle. And I'm wondering if that has anything to do with the potential for it being more difficult to restore because we're wetland.
Well, as most farm farmland that kind of disturbed a wetland with cattle and everything, there's a lot of reed canary grass. And that is kind of the more aggressive invasive species that is there. And so it's not anything that we have not seen before with respect to restoring wetlands that used to be, you know, a part of farmland. So I think their approach is exactly, you know, what the scientists and everybody has been doing for a while that has worked really, really well. So I think it has a potential to really be really neat. And then the other thing that they said is after everything is cleaned up, we might want to install some wood duck boxes and some other waterfall platforms that are only like fifty to a hundred bucks each. So that's, you know, not part of their proposal because it comes after the five years. So it's just something to think about that, you know. I've had a couple other biologists down there and they said it's a great site for waterfall and shorebirds, especially during the migration. And so I think it's really going to enhance the Kettle Park West development once you have some really cool birds coming in. I think it's going to be a really cool site. And on the green part.
How do you get water into it?
Huh?
How do you get water into it? This is dry now, isn't it?
No, it's it's wet now. Kettles are similar to like ephemeral ponds that they are are probably wetter in the spring through the melt-off and the spring rains. And then they dry a little bit through the summer months if it's, if you don't have a wet summer. And then in the fall, when the plants stop taking up as much water, it fills back up. And so it's more like an ephemeral pond and then with the retention pond, I think they have to keep a certain amount of water in there because it's part of the stormwater system. And Rodney can do that, explain that. And then I just want to show you on the green part, there's like the red is wetland area and then the green part is a opal insight. And they really recommend restoring that back into wetland and nice shrubs and everything that native shrub that also enhance the wildlife for that area. And so instead of it being a seed bank for more invasive species, if you restore that at the same time, it it serves a really good purpose.
Regina, thank you so much for your strong dedication to horticulture and science. It brings me hope right now.
Well, it is my background and I've loved this kettle ever since I moved here. So I wanted to see it restored back to its potential beauty and benefit to our whole community. Not even the human community, but their community of wildlife and birds and all that kind of stuff.
Okay, so I'll just wrap up or cover a couple more points on this. So the paragraph that we've just been focusing on, the purpose of that paragraph is to to say that the developer is going to cooperate with the city, authorize the city to do the work. The funding mechanism is addressed later on in the agreement. Scroll down to page six. Okay. So the the city has the opportunity to use tax increment generated by this development to to pay for that work. As other person Hirsch said, there may be other funding opportunities available, such as grant money. But to the extent that the other funding is not available, tax increment will be an opportunity here. We did build into this TIF allocation schedule and the council may be getting familiar with this where basically we list a have kind of a priority list of what gets paid first, second, third, all and so on each year out of available tax increment. The schedule that's in the agreement tonight says that the second priority payment item each year would be the cost of wetland restoration work. The the intent behind how this would work would be that this work would be paid for as the work is done and as the costs are incurred. It's not expected that this would all be paid upfront. And, you know, in discussing the the cash flow of the tax increment district with Jamin, it 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 looks like there there certainly will be adequate tax increment available to cover all of the TIF expenses and including this wetland restoration work each year. I will say that this has been a bit of a sore or a bit of a challenge from the developer's point of view in terms of, you may recall earlier on, we had another payment obligation coming ahead of item three here is this payment on the commercial phase, I'm sorry, item. So item three is the commercial phase TIF borrowing and then item four is the commercial phase municipal revenue obligation. That's a $550,000 municipal revenue obligation that the developer is ultimately eligible to to receive and to be paid for. And the developer's intent is to monetize that, to take that to its lender and use that MRO to generate financing upfront to help fund the cost of the development. And so the developer has expressed concerns about putting other items ahead of that. In discussing this issue with Attorney O'Callaghan, you know, they they don't, they're not here tonight to push back on that. If the council wants that sequence, my understanding is they they will do their best to make it work. They certainly would prefer to have that wetland work come after the commercial phase MRO. But I did structure it this way because this is the structure that was put together during my discussions with Mayor Swadley, Alder Person Hirsch, Finance Director Friedel and Rodney Shield. When we outlined this approach, that was the order that we chose to propose to the developer. And so that's what I, that's how I drafted it. I guess I'm telling you all of that so you understand kind of how we got to that point, that that is something they've expressed some concerns about. My hope is that if the agreement is approved in this format, that they will be successful in getting their lender to, you know, fund, provide the the funds they need. They will be successful in monetizing the municipal revenue obligation. I will say in discussions with Finance Director Friedel that this seems to, in a way, be a little bit of form over substance, maybe from everyone's point of view. I mean, we're we're confident that funding is going to be there to cover everything. And we would hope the lender would recognize that. I'm also confident that if we put this wetland work behind the commercial phase MRO, there will be money to pay for the wetland work. So in a way, this is a, this is a I I'm not sure what to call it other than it's more, it's it's a form over substance issue in my mind. But if the council wants to talk about changing the order, now's the time to do it. If you want to stay with the sequence that you have up here, I think that's, I think that's going to work as well.
You know, and Matt, if I could just briefly speak to that. Yeah, that was very well said. We on behalf of Ford Development Group, we agree with that. We we do believe that the increment projections provide adequate funding for all of these projects that we're contemplating. So I I just want to take a minute on behalf of FDG to join the mayor and and other council members in commending President Hirsch for her leadership on this issue. It came up kind of late in the in the game. And at first, we were very concerned that it would have the potential to really slow things down and and quite frankly, derail plans to get going this spring. But I have to say that President Hirsch put in an extraordinary amount of work to to solicit a proposal from a consultant to work through the process and to get it done so quickly that it has not affected the schedule. And for that, we're grateful. And we think in the end that the partnership and and collaboration we have with the city on this wetland is going to be a true win-win. It's going to enhance the development. It's going to provide benefit to the citizens of Stoughton. And excuse me, not to belabor the point, but this is something that we looked at seven or eight years ago, making some some enhancements to the to the wetlands. And when we approached DNR, the response that we got from the regulators at that point in time was, you know, nice plan, guys, but no, we prefer what they call no disturbance. It's a wetland, you shouldn't touch it, let nature do its thing, and eventually it'll get to where it needs to be. So I think that with the city's partnership on this, the city is in a much better position to lead than a private development, private developer. So we're grateful for for the effort here. We think this is a good proposal. We agree that the increment projections should be sufficient to cover all of these projects, which is why in the end we decided not to raise this form over substance debate. We think it's, we can, we can work with it. If for any reason our lender got skittish on this, we we would come back to you. But I don't, I truly don't anticipate that happening for the reasons that Matt and Jamin have discussed. So we'd ask for your approval of this. I think it's a good plan and we're ready to get get going with this.
Mayor Swadley?
Sure, go ahead.
As I said, yeah, I I just wonder, we had talked about potentially getting some grant money for a project like this. That would defer the cost, I think, to the developer and to the city. And I was wondering who who would be in a position of writing a grant like that to have a restoration of the of the wetland?
I was kind of hoping you would, Sid.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure I could take on another one like that.
Go ahead.
Sid, actually, part of the contract with Stantec or proposals to Stantec is that they actually wrote proposals on our behalf for funding. So I mean, wouldn't be like full funding, but it might be paid for some of the seeds. Plugs, I I don't know, because I know part of the DNR, the person I talked to there, she said that they have some funding for invasive species, you know. removing them. So there might be some funding, because that can be, you know, this is a small project of only a hundred thousand. But even if we get ten or $10,000 paid for, that'd be great. So.
And I'm thinking about a partnership with other other folks too. Like, I know my son was a Eagle Scout at one point and and he had projects like this, putting up, putting up, you know, wildlife structures and that kind of thing. I I think it's, I think to work cooperatively with the with with the citizens of the city, I think would be great.
I think that would be great. That's an excellent point, Sid. So once we get to the point where the wetland is restored and we need like wood dock boxes and other platforms, we should reach out to the Boy Scouts who are always looking for projects. That's excellent, Sid.
And Girl Scouts as well, I think they're.
That's true. Biased on that.
Thank you for gender equity, Sid.
And I got blasted on that one. Sorry, Regina.
Is there anything else that you needed to cover, Matt, on this document?
I don't think so.
For spelling, because turd is not really a word after the second one.
Did you see, did you catch me on another spelling?
Yes. Item number three is, third is kind of spelled interesting.
Yeah, yeah, I I fixed that on mine here. I saw that. I have to say that that's what happens when you're going too fast.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding this?
Yeah, I'm going to reiterate the concerns I had in the fall when we did the first vote on this. Really, I don't, I don't think it's the city's, in the city's interests or the planet's interests to be doing a public subsidy of the primarily single-family development. It's, we're engraving this system of living onto the land when we do this for for the long term. And our whole system is addicted to this type of growth that is truly becoming toxic to our species and every species around us. So I will be voting against this.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding this? Okay, here are none, all in favor of the TIP agreement, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
No.
One of, did I hear two noes?
You heard two noes.
Okay, two noes, any abstentions? Okay, that motion does carry. All right. We're on ordinance six of 2020. The next two items are coming out of Public Works. Sid, can you introduce them since you're the vice chair?
I am not the vice, am I the vice chair? Okay, as of now, I guess.
Yeah.
I guess I am.
So the first one is ordinance six, and then they're they're actually both second readings, Sid.
Yeah, could you, could you pull that up?
Sure.
That'd be nice.
Yeah. Caught me sleeping at the wheel here.
I still don't have it.
Yeah, just give me a second. I'm trying to find the right screen here. I'll have it up in just a moment. All right, there's that and speaking you shall receive.
Okay, I present second reading of the repealing and then recreating section 1031, 10317 and 10318 of the Stoughton Municipal Code relating to property maintenance and outside storage. Present that and so move for approval.
Second.
A second by Elder Person Reeves. Anything you want to comment on this or should we pass it over to somebody else to go through?
Oh, just, we just went through this and and thought that this was a good plan for our city. And I guess I, I guess Rodney knows more about it than I do, actually.
There was concerns raised about property maintenance standards and we revisited it. And we also worked with Public Works Committee as well as the city attorney and outlined some recommended changes to various sections, both in 317 and 318. The red line version is in your packet that identifies the areas that are proposed to be changed and staff recommends approval as well.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, it's an ordinance. Do we have to roll call for ordinances?
You don't have to, no.
Okay, all right, all in favor of the ordinance change, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that carries. And then ordinance seven is also going to be a second reading, Sid.
Okay, second reading, I creating chapter 63 relating to wireless communications facilities in a right-of-way. This came, came before Public Works on April 16, 2020. I don't recall the votes on it, I believe it was three to three to zero. And I so, I present the sole approve. And the dog moves to approves as well.
The second was the dog.
The dog was the second.
I was trying the second, but I got overruled by the dog.
Okay. Elder Person Reeves, our Reeves will give you the second, Elder Person Reeves. Any, Matt or Rodney or Brett, Abar, one of you guys want to walk us through this? I know there were some questions coming out of the first reading that we should probably have answered. And who wants to to do that?
This is Matt. I'll I'll speak to that briefly. Yeah, there were a couple of questions I was asked to address. Include a memorandum in your packet that addressed those questions. The first question involved whether the city has the ability to prevent the build-out of 5G technology. And the memo explains that under both state and federal law, the city is preempted from doing that. So the city does not have the authority to do that. The second question asked whether the city may require when a applicant who's building out this kind of infrastructure to give notice to budding landowners. There is a notice, I should say, there is a notice process already built into the ordinance. The question was whether we could supplement that notice process and require that people who live in the area of the installation be given information about the frequency and power that would be, you know, used at at that facility. And the answer to that is not simple. The answer is the city can do that, but only if it requires others to to do the same kind of, to do the same thing. And so we would, if we wanted to build that kind of notice mechanism or requirement in with respect to small cell technology, we'd have to go through and and do the same kind of thing, require the same kind of thing of other telecommunications infrastructure applicants. We have not done that yet. If that's something this council wants to direct us to do, we could undertake that and and get to that point. But that's the answer. It's not, it's not a simple answer.
Matt, how difficult would that be? Because I think our community, I think, deserves the right to know about what's going on around them, especially if, you know, if there is some public health issue down the way, it'd be nice to know and to try to figure out if this is part of the problem or or not. And people need, I think people need to know that.
There's, there's one other point I'll make, the memo that I forgot to mention. The memo concludes by saying that the city may not regulate wireless facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions. So even if we thought that there was an environmental concern, we we as a city would be preempted from enacting regulations on that basis. In terms of how much work it would be to go through to to impose this kind of notice obligation on all telecommunications providers, I don't think I'm ready to give you an answer to that tonight because we haven't really scoped that out. We haven't talked about what that would entail. Obviously, would be some work involved in terms of going through the identifying other telecommunications providers that are, you know, operating in our city, what regulations they're subject to now, and then trying to create a uniform or even-handed approach to to all of those providers. So I guess I would say this. I think the first step is you should, to adopt the ordinance that you have in front of you tonight. Because in our view, that ordinance gives the city, uses the city's regulatory authority to the maximum extent that is available to you today. So I don't see any reason to wait on putting this on the books. Then the second question would be if the council wants us to take that next step and see if we can, we can supplement the ordinance with that kind of requirement by doing so in an even-handed way, we can undertake that work. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't wait to adopt this ordinance until you've done, until you've got that done.
Well, I harken back to what Regina did, which was to to have an expert to take a look at it and give us some advice as to whether or not there is any significant concern for residents based on, you know, a better understanding. I don't think any of ours in this one, but it would be nice to know whether or not there is a risk.
Well, Sid, I think that'd be great, but I think right now, it's because it's so new, there isn't as much data as opposed to restoring wetlands as there is about potential new telecommunications and their environmental or human health safety at this point. I just would, because 5G is just one of those things and, you know, two years from now, there'll be something else. So it's just, it would just be good to know, you know, if it's a, it might just be a cumulative effect. I mean, you might have 5G and then in the same place you have 4G and you have all this. And that you might have this accumulation that all these companies are emitting. It's not just this one, but maybe it's accumulating and it's too much for the human body to take. So just for people to know what is out there in case there is like a pocket of people getting sick, we actually can start looking at things.
Yeah, I'm not saying we should, we should hold this up because of that, but if they get an insert to tell us something about it.
So Matt, is this something that you would, you think you'd do in-house or are you working with the league or anybody else?
Well, so the ordinance that's before you tonight is one that was commissioned by the league. The league of Wisconsin municipality paid Anita Galucci and the Boardman Law Firm to develop this ordinance as a model ordinance. And then it took us quite a bit of work in-house at my office and working with city staff to convert that into a format that would work for the city of Stoughton. And as I said, my book, my understanding is that this ordinance is designed in a way to use your local authority that remains to the greatest extent possible to manage and regulate the build-out of this infrastructure in your city. And so if if the city said to me, let's, let's say this ordinance is adopted and the next question is, well, what, let's say the city said, we we wanted to hire a consultant to help us either understand how we can require telecommunications providers. Well, I'm sorry, my dogs are not sure what's going on there. If this, I guess whether we would do something in-house or not would depend on the assignment. And so it sounds like there's an interest in in a couple of things. One is, could we require telecommunications providers to provide more information to the city and its residents about their technology, about how they operate, health effects, things of that nature? If there is a desire to dig into that stuff, and this is an area where the federal government and the state government are highly involved in regulating and restricting local authority. I guess I would say we would take a look at what the city wants to do and decide, is that something that I should do or is that something we should go to someone like the Boardman Firm? Where they have people who really are in the weeds on this stuff? And maybe we would do that. It would depend on what you want to do, what you're trying to do.
Well, Matt, we've had people come in and present in various companies about their, their, you know, plans and and say, and we could ask questions then of a, of an expert within the company that the telecommunications company that's doing it actually and saying, so what is your, what is your understanding about risk? I mean, that would be a possibility too, that we could actually have somebody from that company to come in and present to us. That might allay some of our fears.
So I think what I'm going to suggest is that we go ahead and and vote on the motion. And then if you could give us some direction, if you want us to investigate this, I'm thinking we could have Public Works could maybe do some more work with Matt on that. And then at least bring back, you know, what they've learned during that process and what the cost would be if we were to pursue, you know, additional language to be included in this document at a later date.
And let me also suggest that if this is something that the city is interested in, one, one thing to do would be to be in touch with our, with your state and federal legislative representatives. That is where all the, that's where these issues are really being addressed, is at the state and federal level. And believe me, they have taken away 99% of the power the city has to regulate in this area. That's my view, my understanding. And so I'd be asking our state and federal representatives, what, what can you tell us about why we shouldn't be worried about that?
And and I can tell you that when I went out to Washington DC, you know, I, we did, those questions did come up with Senator Baldwin and Polkan and Johnson. And, you know, I, I think that there was some apathy toward us from some and not so much from others. And, you know, it's, it's really being driven by the special interests and that's the telecommunications market. And that's the bottom line. They have deep pockets. So it really needs to be a coordinated effort, not just with us, but other municipalities, you know, at the state and national level. And, you know, they have lobbyists that work on this stuff full-time. We don't. So that's kind of how it works, but certainly, you know, we can do what we can, you know, locally to engage with other leaders to to try to, you know, reiterate what our concerns are and see if they can, you know, try to help address them because, you know, on certain items, they they love hearing about us wanting local control. But on this particular item, there didn't seem to be a lot of interest amongst some folks that I know out there.
Yeah, because I think at this point, we're just asking them to provide information to our community about frequency of their and emissions of their, you know, what they're planning to put in the ground or above, you know. It's, you know, we have other postcards that are being sent to residents if they are working near any residential area. It's just, I think it has to be part of that postcard.
Vote on this resolution and then move this, the other item back to public works to maybe. Put together something a little more organized and to present or a plan.
Okay, are you guys ready to vote? Sounds like all the person searches or reaches all the person. Are the rest here ready to vote?
Yep, I'm ready.
Okay, and then we'll, uh, we'll take another whack at it to that public works. So all in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? And any abstentions on this one? Okay, here none, that carries.
So I'm happy to work in with this also, Tim, um, because I know I, I raised some of the questions about frequency and power and that and. I think if we had just done, uh, even if we did a survey of random places. Within the city with, with a field strength meter, you'd have a better idea of whether this is a mountain or a molehill.
Okay, so when public works reorganizes, we'll get this on as an agenda item at some point and then, uh. Anybody that's interested can either attend a meeting or at least share their thoughts and concerns with the new chairperson.
Sure enough.
Our seventy-eight is coming from, uh, finance. All the person Schumacher, you want to introduce this one?
Sure, R seventy-eight twenty twenty authorizing and directing proper city official. To repeal the existing city of Stoughton purchasing policy and adopt the city of Stoughton capital improvements plan. CIP expenditure manual, so moved.
Second by, uh, all the person Doom. And all the person Schumacher, you want to do an overview of this one?
Sure, this was a pretty good retooling of the, of the purchasing policy, um, to kind of streamline it and, and get. Forms and that unified in it, uh, also. Uh, with a lot of input from department heads. I think this was a lot of things that were happening already, but not necessarily. Written down so specifically. Uh, you know, we pushed this one back and forth for a while, um, and then finally, finally got it all put together.
Okay, anything you want to highlight, uh, Director Friedel?
No, uh, older person Schumacher hit it on the head. It was, we really looked at the existing policy. It's vague, it's ambiguous, it's kind of all over the place and. Really the concern was that we weren't, just in the finance department, we weren't seeing all of the documentation come through that perhaps maybe we should have just for. Tracking purposes. Um, so we just took this policy and really tried to simplify it and, and at the end of the day, we're really just. Just attempting to trust the budget process here. Um, and give department heads a little bit more leeway in terms of making their purchases, you know, specifically up to the fifty thousand dollars mark. Um, at the end of the day, it still addresses any budgets potentially over budget and things like that where the finance committee and council will have control over those. It would be brought forth for decision. Uh, but again, we just tried to simplify the process to streamline it a little bit.
Okay, anybody have any questions or concerns about it?
Uh, this is Alder Riley. If you can hear me, can you hear me kids? Thanks. Isn't that lovely? Hey, um, just, just if I might, just this like sense summary please of. The substantive changes we, we have here. Um, in other words, are we affording more discretion, less oversight? More oversight, less discretion. What, what are, what are we doing from that standpoint? Not, you know, granular, uh, but just. Basically from that standpoint, is it just more discretion? So there's less busy work, um, less oversight, what, what? Can somebody address that for me, please?
Um, it's provided you a little bit more discretion to just push projects through, um, and the discretion in terms of we're still monitoring the budget. The policy was so required things be brought forth if they're over budget. It's just eliminate some of the, the, the paths that these, these smaller projects have to take specifically up to fifty thousand dollars coming in front of the committees and the councils. For approval, even though they've been budgeted and they're under budget. Um, and it is really just clarifying CIP purchases versus what we would call operating costs and things like that. Because there was some confusion in, in the existing policy. So as again, they add a little bit of discretion and streamline the process for some of the smaller purchases. But also make it more clear that we're really just attempting to address CIP budgeted purchases at this point.
Thanks. And, and also it doesn't alter, as I read it anyway. It doesn't alter the requirement, the bidding requirements, et cetera, where those apply, obviously. This is just with respect to other operational. Budgetary matters with the department heads would have an ability to get things done more quickly within a certain. Dollar amount without having to come to council for everything, correct?
Correct. We still have to follow the, obviously the state statutes. One thing we wanted to clarify was like the master service agreements, the cooperative procurement agreements, things like that where. We wanted to eliminate all of the work that would have to go to get three quotes, even though we know that we're going to go this route anyway, just due to system continuity. Or because it's a state purchasing program or something like that. We really just tried to clarify that and make it a little bit simpler for the department.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Here none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Um, next item is, uh, tentative budget schedule and this is coming from the finance director.
Okay, so this, this was in front of finance tonight as well. We're not looking for decision, just any input, any questions you may have, but. Um, overall, the, the schedule is pretty similar to what we've done in past years. You can see here in the first section, we're looking at the CIP budget. Um, even though we, it, it says that the budget works each and instructions will be tomorrow. We've been working on this process for a couple of months already. Um, official kickoff will be tomorrow actually, but you can see we built in, uh, three CIP budget committee meetings again. We may not need the third. The last couple of years we've found that we actually have needed the third. So I did schedule three for the, the CIP approval process. But nothing has really changed here. Um, and then the next section is the operating budget again, similar to past years. I added a couple of internal notes for us to use in terms of scheduling, nothing that impacts the council or the committee, the whole meetings. Uh, but again, on the operating side of things, we, we've scheduled three committee of the whole meetings. Maybe we only need two, but we have three scheduled in case we do need them. Uh, so again, just looking for any input, any questions, anything like that that you may have at this time.
So.
I have one.
Go ahead.
I, I, just for the benefit of the new people, uh, new person on the committee, um, somebody, somebody tell Fred especially. Who's on CIP, how that, how they get on CIP.
Yeah, it's actually the chairs of the, the standing committees and it's actually at the bottom of this document. I believe the only person that needs to be updated is. Is the public works committee. Um, and I don't think they met to elect a new president, so.
Arc says neither, Jamin.
Okay, okay. So once all of that has been done, obviously we'll, we'll send out the appointments, but it'll list the actual. Um, chair, chair, people, chairpersons of the, the standing committees. Um, anybody's obviously welcome to attend. We encourage you to attend. Because, uh, Mary Swardly obviously brought this up in the finance committee meeting, but this is, this is the number, the CIP, the borrowing number. This is the number that has the biggest impact on our overall levy, uh, and can provide the most fluctuations. But we do encourage, you know, everybody to attend, but those that, that are required to are the, the chairpersons.
Okay, I just, I just really wanted to do that on the behalf of, uh, my friend Fred.
Thank you, Sid.
Yeah, and please save the dates, especially if you're on the CIP committee. We want to make sure we have quorums. So if you can put these dates in your calendars, um, so you don't forget, there's been years where we've had a difficult time getting enough people together. And it's important that we conduct the business and it's a good learning opportunity for all of us.
So I have one other question and that is if, uh, if there wouldn't be quorum, would there be a possibility to have. Uh, that second person would be the vice as a, uh, as a CIP, uh, fill-in or. Uh, ancillary person for the CIP, would that be a good idea?
Well, it's, it's a CIP committee, you'll elect a chair. And you'll elect a vice chair, but you still have to have a quorum of the committee members that are on there in order to conduct any business. And we do schedule the staff to be there to do presentations. So we're going to have a lot of people sitting there, uh, with nothing to do if we don't have a quorum, I guess is my point.
That was, that was, that was my que, that was my question, whether or not the council should have a, have a way to get around that whole situation by sending a vice chair. And, and the, and the absence of a chair.
Tim, just a quick correction, uh, the chair is already selected as the president.
Yeah, I think that is true by council policy. Yeah, we changed that a couple of years ago.
Yep, so Regina's, Regina will be chair and then it will just collect the vice chair.
Right.
Sid, if I understand.
It was just an idea, yeah. It was an idea, just to, just to say. If we don't have quorum, that you send the vice chair instead of the chair.
And Sid, you're talking about the vice chair of the individual standing committees, not just the chair. Okay.
I'm just saying that in the, in the event that we're not able to make quorum, that, that that would be a solution to make in quorum by. Uh, the city council allowing that the vice chair be sent instead of the, in the absence of a chair.
So are you suggesting?
I realize that that would, that would take a, an act of both Congress and the, and the, uh.
Dean could take that up at CIP and just change the council rules. I believe that they could do that.
So I think this was on here for information only because I know there, um, we're starting to gear up for the budget. I know some of you. Have asked about, you know, when the process is going to begin. Uh, we're still trying to analyze. What the effects of the COVID is going to be for our budget. Um, you heard Executive Parisi talk about the county budget. Um, they rely on, uh, sales tax. Uh, we don't, but we get a trickle effect from state, federal. And, and Dane County funding on some of our, um. On some of our budget items as well as some of the grants that we apply for. So there's bound to be some sort of an effect, but we just don't know what it's going to be, uh, but that'll be vetted out during this process. Anything else on this?
Mayor, this is, uh, Alder Riley. Actually, nothing on this, but I, I actually wanted to mention something with respect to the prior agenda item that I neglected to mention. So whenever I might be able to do that, I'd appreciate it.
Is that, was that a question or a comment?
Yeah, it's a comment.
Oh, well, go ahead, but.
Okay, cool. Um, listen, on just section one of the policy that was drafted, sub A. It reads at the end of, uh, sub A. Department heads are encouraged to perform sufficient due diligence to ensure the lowest costs obtained for these purchases. And then it says, department heads are encouraged to perform sufficient due diligence to ensure the lowest cost. In other words, it's redundant, it's stated twice. I assume that wasn't just for emphasis, but I assume that's an error. So I thought I'd mention that. That way you also know that I actually read these things.
We appreciate that. We'll make that correction.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is. Um, item number thirteen, which is our idiot twenty twenty. That came from, uh, finance, all the person Schumacher.
So our eighty twenty twenty authorizing and directing the proper city official to enter into an agreement. With Raymond P. Cattell Incorporated for the twenty twenty street pulverization project contract three dash twenty twenty. So moved.
Okay.
Second by all the person Jensen, all the person Schumacher.
All right, so the, uh, Ray Cattell Incorporated was the, the low bid on there. Um, uh, there's a little bit of. Not really changing in it, but, um, the alternate bid is, uh, we're not going to accept the alternate bid because that. Those projects can get pushed out one more year. Um, those are detailed in some of the whereas on there. Um, some of the money difference in there are things that are going to get moved around from other already budgeted things. To make up some of that difference in there. Uh, there was a reduction in the overall scope of the project. Some things were just removed from it completely. And other things were just kicked out to twenty twenty-one. I think I got all the highlights on that.
Excellent. I think you did. Anything you want to add, Director Schill?
Um, just, just acknowledging the fact that bid alternative one was work from on Roby Road from Johnson Street to Van Buren Street. Uh, that, that is not recommended for acceptance at this time. We would try to program, program that work in a future CIP year. And the reduction in work is to scale back the amount of work to be completed by taking out a, a cul-de-sac. It's a low volume street. Um, it's not in terrible condition, but certainly will need to have attention in the near future. So we'd like to push that part of the project back. Um, but we do endorse moving forward with this project with a little better Raymond Cattell for the little bit amount of six seventy-four, eight thirty-six.
Yeah, Rodney, that, that's quite a, a jump from what we anticipated. For the, the project to what we got, uh, quotes on. I mean, I'm not, you know, criticizing our, our. Our budget thing, but I'm just really concerned now that if prices go up that much. How do you foresee this impacting our future roadwork? We're going to have to really scale back every year because there's going to be such a huge increase in expenditures for. Of work or what do you, what are your thinking on this? I'm just really concerned that, you know, it's two hundred thousand dollars that we're. You know.
Look, those are, those are valid points. There, there has been some variability in the bid, bid amounts. If whoever is screen can co, control can just scroll up, we had identified a number of pieces within this project area. That really caused that project scope to creep, if you will. Um, looking at some additional storms to or some additional sidewalk, um, some increased pricing as you, you so noted. Um, but one of the things that the mayor and I and Director Abear and Weiss have been talking about and. And Jamin Frical have been talking about is really collaborating on a holistic approach to make sure we're really anticipating costs during the budget. Process as opposed to, um, having this occur at the bidding point. So what we plan to do is try to have next year probably be a pretty significant design year. So we can forecast these costs better before the budgets are created for these projects. And, and have some more liability and, and really making sure we're, we're collaborating on the different utilities and infrastructure, uh, on each project area.
Sounds great. Thanks. Thank you.
Rodney, you want to talk a little bit about East Main Street?
Um, East Main Street, well, not part of this particular, the, the reason for East Main Street, uh, we had, we had anticipated making some. Um, spending some rehab dollars on East Main Street from railroad tracks to Ammottson Parkway. The scope of that rehab work isn't real defined yet at this point. And during the public, um, open house we held earlier this year, there was a lot of, uh, resistance to a significant effort. Being undertaken for East Main Street at this point. So we really think reallocating those dollars or the, the rehab dollars to Roby Road at this point. And then better scoping what work would need to be done on East Main Street is more appropriate for inclusion of future CIP project.
The concern for the downtown business owners is with Main Street being. Done by the DOT from page all the way up to Whole Avenue that really they've kind of felt the walls were closing in from both sides. If we did this East Main Street work. really they've kind of felt the walls were closing in from both sides if we did this East Main Street work. So, you know, when the information started coming in, I, I think it really makes sense and and, and those discussions were even before the whole COVID conversation took place. So I think with businesses trying to get reopened, I think it'll be really important to provide as much access as we can. And so I think, you know, delaying this project, I think will, will help the downtown businesses. Hey, I think if I can add a comment, I think that will come as a relief to some downtown and Main Street businesses to hear this.
And Mayor, you just raised an interesting point, which is a little off subject, but I've heard some constituents came to me and said they are appreciative of Public Works Director Abert to, to have signage and I think that that's been really helpful as well.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any other questions or comments on this item? Here none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Item number fourteen. This is a resolution that we drafted with our leadership team and it has my name on it, but you don't get to hear me present it. I think AJ wants to present this one. She put a lot of time and effort in collaboration with all the departments. So AJ, if you're still on here, you want to walk us through this?
Yes, okay. So this is a resolution, as it says here, you're decoupling the city's interim compensation plan that you put in place on April fourteenth of twenty twenty, which was a resolution that recognized that the city would continue to pay the employees and follow the safer at home order. With the current climate and not knowing if that safer at home order is going to go through the end of the month and or how we're going to start to return to work, we're asking for your permission and authorization that the mayor, along with the leadership team, develops a return to work, return to service plan for the city of service, or I'm sorry, for the city of Stoughton, and that'll be superseding the interim compensation plan with the safer at home order. Any questions on that?
And I believe Attorney Dragney helped us with the language as well, didn't he?
Correct.
Does everybody fully understand what we're asking for here?
So in your return to work and return to service plan, will that include a sunset date or reunification of the compensation plan?
Yes, it will. Absolutely, yep. We just need to figure out, that's a great question. The reason that we're asking for this is we need to be able to develop based on whatever the framework is that they give us at the time that they either end the safer home and what the requirements are for each department. And or if we run through the end of the month, how do we reintroduce employees? At what point do we do that? So there's a lot of work that the directors need to do, department heads as well as the mayor, to put together what that framework is for us to be able to move forward and figure out how we're going to bring the services back as well as the employees.
So.
AJ, were you bearing that in with us once you get it?
Absolutely, that'll be sent out to you. So as soon as we start putting the, the framework together, we will be communicating that with, with all of you.
So what we've been doing is we have our weekly management team meetings and then many, many of us join calls with municipalities or Dane County or other other peers that we work with, Park and Recs. I know Dan's been on a number of calls as well regarding, you know, the Troll Beach decision. And what we do, been doing is taking the information and trying to figure out, you know, when we open up our buildings, for example, what that'll look like. And each building is unique. Some of them are one floor, some of them are three floors, some of them require a lot of public interactions. Some of them don't require any at all. So what we're trying to do is, is our employees return to work. Obviously, the number one thing is we want to make sure employees and our constituents that are coming in to get their services are safe. So we've been working on that for several weeks now and you know, we're trying to put this in a document. What we're asking for is for you to give us the flexibility to enact these measures when the time comes and we don't know when that'll be. And the alternative, I think, would be to schedule, you know, a special meeting on a short notice and we really don't want to, you know, do that to you guys as well. So that's what we're trying to figure out here. And it's, you know, we're, it's a lot of work, but you know, leadership has really brought some great ideas and we've already implemented some changes in some of the buildings in anticipation of people coming back to work within the buildings. Some are still working at home and they're working, you know, to the best of their ability with the tools that we can provide them.
I haven't, had an offline discussion with AJ just last week and I asked her a question about how we're utilizing our employees and she, I was really pleased because she, she really explained how well we're using people even though they have to be at home. I mean, we are really, we are really keeping our staff working and I think that that's been a real positive thing for, for everybody. Everybody's getting paid. Some people aren't full time yet, but we've, we've maintained, I think, a real, a great personnel for our city and she explained that most people have been working from home and doing their work well, so.
Thank you.
There are many, there are also many employees, just so everybody's aware, that are at work a hundred percent, utilities, public works. They have all set up different scattered schedules to be able to have adequate coverage and have those employees working. A week ago, you all know that we did the reintroduction of the curbside pickup for the library. The senior center is going to be a real challenge for us because like Mayor had said, there are multiple levels in that building. There's different, you have a, a population there that's more at risk and there's many different elements that are going to need to occur there and Cindy needs to have the leverage to be able to work through that. And again, many of her employees, I'm sure you've seen on the communications she's sending out, are working. So, I mean, we're doing the, the best that we can. We just are looking for the approval to not end this at the safer at home expiration that we get the ability to be able to develop those plans because it's not a one size fits all.
Okay, I have Alder Person Jensen and then Lagaki after that.
Yeah, I, I would make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Any comments, Greg, or?
Nope, nope, that's it. All good.
Alder Person Lagaki, you're up.
Yeah, I, I think this is an excellent idea because I know when we first talked about it, we wanted to value our employees as well as our constituents. But this is a com- this is a complicated time. And AJ, I don't know if, if you're able to speak to it or Mayor, you are, but there's a culmination of potential Supreme Court, Wisconsin Supreme Court ruling. There's potential idea that Dane County will put out health safety standards for Dane County. And then there's this idea, like, can you help me understand how all that potentially could interface and would, would this plan then give us the most flexibility to bring people back to work?
Absolutely, this does give us the most flexibility. As the mayor had said, different needs for each department and different buildings that we're all in. In regards to the legal aspect, I don't know who's, who the best one is to talk about what's happening right now at the Supreme Court, but what I read last is that we still don't have a decision as to what's going to happen and my fear and I think everyone's fear here is if the safer at home order is overturned and or we reach the end of the month, you know, we're working diligently to try to figure out how to reopen and what is the framework. We don't know. We haven't received anything yet from Dane County. We haven't received anything from the state. So as soon as, if they're going to provide us with something, we need to figure out how do we implement that? What does it look like? And it's not like they've talked about the terminology of the flip of a switch. It's the turn of a dial and how do we safely bring those employees back and safely service our citizens of our community. So that's what we've been trying to focus on, but it's not a one size fits all. We don't have all of the information at this point. So this would give us the most bang for our buck. It gives us the flexibility by department, by leadership and the mayor to be able to work together to come up with what that would look like by department. And then we would be providing that to you. Matt as a comment. You're welcome.
So one of the, one of the reasons that this resolution is needed is that when the council approved the current compensation arrangement, it, it, its action said that this, the current plan is effective until the safer at home order is lifted or until further action of the common council. And so the, the benefit of this action in my mind is that it decouples the city's decision-making from what happens with the safer at home order. So that you're no longer having to worry about reacting to what happens at the state level. Instead, the city can develop its own plan, paying attention, of course, to what happens at the state level or at the county. But we, we were worried that you might, we might find ourselves facing a day when the safer at home order is lifted and we're not ready for that, don't have a plan for that. So that's, that's another thing I would add.
Yeah, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Of the other municipalities that you're speaking with on this, are, are there others? I'm sure everyone is at a different state of development and or completion on this. And I hear you're collaborating with all that information. Are there any out there that are, that can be modeled or just to?
I actually just sent out to all of leadership for our meeting tomorrow, one of the plans that are in place based on essential versus non-essential and then items that we need to think about in the event that there is nothing handed down to us from the county or the state. So it goes through all those items. We're also going to talk about following some of the protocols that they already have in place at Public Works that are working in regards to high tech services, common areas that are shared. So we'll be having a discussion about that, but yes, I have been talking with the area communities and that's what I shared just a little bit ago with leadership to prepare for our meeting tomorrow. I have been participating in roundtables with other municipalities and gathering information from them and bouncing ideas back and forth. And this is kind of a culmination of all the information that I gathered from that.
AJ, what are people thinking about with respect to, so we can get our people back to work, but what if the daycares are not open and people still have to take care of their kids? How are we going to figure that out?
You know, I haven't had anybody approach me on that yet, so that's a great question, Regina. I'm going to have to look into that.
I can, I can offer a little information about that. The emergency, the emergency family medical leave extension that was enacted by Congress does provide for a, I believe it's twelve weeks of emergency medical or family leave. That you can use to take care of a minor child who's regular daycare. I'm sorry, there's a lot of background noise. Okay.
It's the age of, I think it was, Matt, fourteen and under?
Well, it's actually not even that specific. It just has to be a minor child who's, either school is not open or a regular daycare provider is not available. I do have one client who has an employee in that situation. They have a young child. Their regular daycare provider is no longer available due to the, the crisis. And so they're taking advantage of that. Now, that's, that's a limited amount. I mean, that's twelve weeks. But that's one, that's one option that employees will have.
And just so everyone's aware on that, we do, I mean, we have to offer the F M L A, so that would be an option for our staff.
Yeah, and, and we also need to learn more about what Executive Parisi was talking about tonight as well and whatnot. We can tap into that. I don't know if that's for private or public. I just don't know any of the details about that proposal.
Yep. So you have a motion on the floor?
Any other questions or comments on the motion? Here none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None opposed. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate the trust that you're giving us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, item number fifteen is R eighty-two. This one came from Utilities. Alder Person Hersch, you want to introduce this one? President Hersch or Healy, who wants to do this one?
Doesn't matter. I can do it. Authorizing and directing the proper city officials to enter into agreement with Globe Contractors Incorporated for the twenty twenty sanitary sewer replacement construction contract four dash twenty twenty. And I so move.
Okay.
Second by Alder Person Jensen. President Hersch, do you want to elaborate?
Is Jill still on the line or is she off?
She is.
She does a far better job than I do. She wants to introduce, since we saved the best for last, let her actually talk.
Very good, thank you. So this actually project is, or this bid was the bid alternate for the Prospect Street project that we had. This is actually sanitary sewer section that ran between the lot lines and ultimately through the John Park. That actually ultimately took the sanitary sewer and rerouted it so that it no longer runs across or runs next to the Ahara River. We actually, when we did this before, we didn't know for sure about easements and exactly how this would come through. When we did authorize the Prospect Street project, this was the alternate. We authorized only the base bid. We did with this bid, we did receive five bids. We did also have a bid alternate for this project, so. The base bid was all the sanitary work. The bid alternate was actually changing the completion date from August twenty-eighth to July third. And the reason being here is what we recognize is the first bid that went through that ultimately was awarded to Parisi doesn't have necessarily the coordination requirements to make sure kind of the timing of the project. And ultimately that this piece of the project is best if it's actually done ahead of the sanitary sewer part of the project where the jack and bore section would go. So that was the reason and for that bid alternate of accelerating the work to July third. The bid, base bid actually came in for Capital Underground at about three hundred and fifty-nine thousand. But with the base, or with the bid alternate included, Globe was the low bidder for three hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. Recommending that because that ensures the greatest chance of not having extra costs related to these two projects coming together. Another piece of this, I think, that's really important to highlight and one of the reasons that we actually had council authorize a rebid of this project is we are running against a budget issue here. We had previously, I believe in January, reauthorized basically the reallocation of budget dollars for this project. Even with that, we're actually, this project puts us about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars over budget. So it would be a budget basically add to the twenty twenty wastewater budget. With working with Jamin on this, we really evaluated a lot of things. I don't want to speak to Jamin's numbers here. We had, we are planning actually a rate adjustment for the wastewater for twenty twenty. Originally, we had budgeted six percent and then with the work that he's done, we're at four point seven four percent, which is about a dollar fifty-five per month for residential customer. So ultimately, this adjustment, that additional cost doesn't overly impact that need for rate adjustments. But I think the importance of this project can really be, I mean, I guess there's just so much value here ultimately to remove the potential environmental threat of having that sanitary sewer next to the river rerouting that. So I'd recommend that we move forward with the bid with Globe. Jamin, do you have anything that you would like to add?
No, you pretty well nailed it on the head. We worked through this. We did have a six percent increase budget in, in the twenty twenty budget. Actually with a one-on-one implementation, implementation date. As I've alluded to, we've already started working through the CIP process and utilities in city are, are basically and the utilities in city are, are basically on the same page in terms of what we know, know that we need to look at in terms of reductions. Um, and I think everybody's in agreement that twenty twenty-one is, is kind of shaping up to be more of a design year and really try to scope out a, an effective five-year CIP tool. Um, so with those planned reductions in the out years, twenty-one through twenty-four, twenty-five with utilities, we were able to fit this one into the budget with minimal impact on the rates going forward.
Any questions or comments on this one from anyone? Sid, you're muted.
Okay, this, this is a project in my area, and I think it is absolutely, it's a costly one for both the city and also residents, but I think it's really important. Um, and, uh, so I, so I'm fully in agreement with this resolution. Now, I would point out to Jill, although I'm not Norwegian, I'm Dutch, uh, that it's, it's pronounced beyond rather than bijan.
I knew somebody was gonna.
I appreciate that version, Sid, but I do really seem to struggle with the names.
We had a decent amount of debate about the pronunciation of that in parks for a while.
Yes.
Beyond.
Sid, can I hear that one, one more time?
It's, it's beyond, if it beyond, just think beyond, it's beyond Sid Borsma's house.
Oh, Sid, what would we do without you?
You and me.
You've been sitting on that one all night.
I've been, I've been waiting for Jill to be able to respond to Jill on that one. Uh, but it is beyond.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate that because I, I seem to butcher pretty much every name that we have, so thank you.
Any questions or comments on the motion?
No.
Here are no questions or comments. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. I think I'm, I think I have one more motion I'm waiting for.
Move to adjourn.
That's the one. It was, uh, Reeves and Johnson.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Yes, I, I, I know.
Good night, y'all.
Good night, all.